Welcome back after a month off, fellow commissioners. And I'd like to start this September 6th Everett Planning Commission meeting. And starting off, Kathy, if we could do roll call.
Vice Chair Tisdale.
Here.
Commissioner Sand.
Here.
Commissioner Adams.
Here.
Commissioner Jordison.
Here.
Commissioner Beck.
Here.
Commissioner Zalinski.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Lark.
I'm here.
Good, thank you. And then I would, the minutes were emailed out to us and there's a copy here. If we could take action on that, that would be wonderful.
I would move approval of the July 19th minutes.
Second.
Move in second.
Commissioner Lark.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Upstee.
Commissioner Zalinski.
Yes.
Commissioner Beck.
Upstee.
Commissioner Jordison.
Yes.
Commissioner Adams.
Yes.
Commissioner Sand.
Yes.
Vice Chair Tisdale.
Yes. Okay, starting with Alex, any reports or anything?
Nothing to report.
Megan?
I'll just thank all the union members, past and present, for my holiday yesterday, Labor Day.
Michael?
No reports.
Catherine?
No reports.
Catherine?
No report.
Okay. Chris?
No report.
All right. Staff?
Alan Giffen, Planning Director, we will have a meeting two weeks from tonight on some, at least one item that I know we'll talk about is definition of family and some related code amendments, other definitions. David, do we have any other items?
Some.
Oh, yeah, more on Metro Everett, talking about the incentives package, some items for discussion related to the Metro Subarea Plan. That's it.
David? Okay, thank you. At this time, if there are any citizens that would like to speak about anything that is not on the agenda, this is your opportunity to get up and teach us what's on your mind. Anything that isn't on the agenda. Okay. Well, moving right along, let's go into item number one. And former Planning Commissioner and now staff member?
Yes, Karen Stewart with City of Everett Planning. And I'm just here to introduce our presenters tonight. So what you're going to learn about is sort of a follow-up with our Conference of Plan element dealing with climate change. And you'll see in the presentation, there's a reference of one of the adopted policies. So this is implementing your comp plan. And the consultant team was hired by the city. City Council took action last March. And so since then, they have been gathering data and preparing what is called an energy map. And you should have a paper copy that shows the presentation. And there are also copies at the table for folks in attendance tonight. And the consultant will explain about the energy map and what went into compiling that data, as well as creating what is known as a carbon wedge and that analysis. And then sort of talking about some of their recommendations of next steps. So the city council will be hearing this similar presentation the end of the month. So if they're, basically, this is just information for the Planning Commission tonight, but if there's some comments that you would like us to take forward to the planning, or to the city council, they will be looking at this item in the near future. So Eileen Quigley is with a firm called Climate Solutions, and she's our lead consultant. And she has Derek Brokoff here with Stockholm Environment Institute, who has helped with some of the technical analysis. So they'll be doing the presentation, and then we'll have a little time for questions afterwards. So, Eileen?
Thank you very much. I greatly appreciate the opportunity to be here, and I thank also Councilmember Paul Roberts, who is the reason why we're here initially, and also to the staff of Everett with whom we've been working. And I really appreciate the opportunity to be here and share with you a bit of our work and then the work that we have done for the City of Everett. So a very brief agenda, I'm speaking for just about 20 minutes, and then we have 10 minutes for questions. The agenda, I'll tell you briefly about Climate Solutions, the new Energy Cities program, I'll show you the energy map we've created, and then our carbon wedge analysis. Climate Solutions is a Northwest nonprofit organization. We've been around for about 18 years. Our mission, as you can see, is to accelerate practical and profitable solutions to global warming. We are funded primarily by foundation grants, about 56% foundation grants and about 36% individual contributions. And the remainder is service revenue, or occasionally, we have government contracts as well. We also partner with Stockholm Environment Institute, and my colleague Derek here is with me. And SEI has been around for actually a quarter of a century, based in Stockholm, but they have offices in the U.S., in Seattle, and in Cambridge, Massachusetts, affiliated with Tufts, and then down at UC Davis as well. And this is a very well-known and highly respected nonprofit organization in Europe that does a great deal of technical analysis around carbon reduction and a wide range, mostly scientists and research analysts, mathematicians. New Energy Cities is a program of climate solutions. We work in partnership with Northwest Cities to help them figure out how to reduce their carbon emissions. We have, our program is focused on working with cities to create ambitious goals, so targets for carbon reduction. And then we do what we call the carbon math, and that's what I'm going to show you tonight, the math we've done for the City of Everett. We then work with communities that are interested in figuring out how to actually achieve the targets they've set, different strategies, and then help develop programs, if requested, in those specific areas, in energy efficiency and conservation, renewable energy, to replace coal and natural gas, various solutions around transportation, and then all of the different pieces of the technology, smart technology that brings it all together. This slide just shows you the communities that we have been in over the last seven years. Wide variety of cities and counties, we're up to 22 at this point. And then we also work with the King County Cities Climate Collaboration, which is a coalition of 13 cities in King County, plus the county that are working on carbon reduction. So why are we here? Why pursue carbon reduction? Certainly, from Climate Solutions' point of view, we see the climate imperative to reduce as much, in conjunction with what the science tells us we need to do. We also know that cities and counties and all sub-national parts of the country are where a lot of carbon emissions are located, and so working in cities is highly leveraged in helping us achieve that. We also see the economic benefits of embracing clean energy and the risks of not, particularly as we move outward in our trajectory. In our state, we have specific climate goals that were adopted in 2008, so those can also inform our work. And as Karen said, the City of Everett Comprehensive Plan has a specific policy that brought us to this place today. So in looking at this policy, that the city should inventory community-wide GHG emissions, develop a climate action plan with goals and recommended strategies, that is what prompted, I believe, the city to ask us to help. So in doing the energy map and the carbon wedge analysis, these are the data sources that we use. So for transportation, we use vehicle miles traveled, and we receive that data from Puget Sound Regional Council. In terms of commercial, residential, and industrial energy use, we get the data for the electricity consumption from Snohomish PUD, and then for natural gas consumption from Puget Sound Energy. And then for population growth, we received a population growth factor from the City of Everett. So this first image that I'm showing you here is the energy and carbon footprint map for Everett for 2014. So the first thing to understand about what you're seeing here is this is a snapshot in time. So we had aggregate numbers for the year 2014, and that is what we put into our model so that you could get a picture of what the total emissions were in that period of time. To read the flow map, you recognize that on the left side, you have sources of power and energy, and then on the right side, you can see the end use. So your hydro and your nuclear and your renewables are carbon-free, hence they do not have any carbon emissions associated with them. And you can see how they flow through, mostly all through electricity generation. Moving down, you see that you have a bit of coal in your portfolio, and that also is used only for electricity generation. Moving down onto natural gas, you can see that natural gas in your community is used for electricity generation as well as for directly heating, you know, residential buildings and commercial buildings and industrial buildings, or powering them in some way. And then the petroleum is directly related to transportation. And then I get, just being clear, on the other side, so the emissions are the same on either side, this is not, that's why you see the two numbers are identical on either side, but then on the output side, you see the different end uses for either residential use, commercial use, industrial use, or transportation. The second image that you're seeing is the beginning of the carbon wedge analysis. So in this case, what we did was we took a growth scenario, as I mentioned before, based on information that was given to us by the city, and we plotted what we would call a business-as-usual line, which is the line that heads up. Then we also took the goal of a 50 cent of reduction, 50% reduction of your 2014 base year by 2030. The reason for that goal, and let me be clear, the City of Everett has not adopted that goal. That would be a process that you could discuss or would be discussed, but this is for modeling purposes. This is the goal that most communities are, certainly in the Northwest are using, and also in other parts of the country. So that was the first reason why we were, why we selected it. We were having you be in the, sort of in the same ballpark, or in the same ballpark as other communities around the state. 2030 is a practical time horizon. You may see, if you've looked at carbon reduction goals before, a lot of them have 2050 as the year. And we just find that that's too far out for us to practically help communities, and we also believe that so much is going to change dramatically between now and 2050, so we think the 2030 is more reasonable. And perhaps most important of all, in order to get to 2050, you need to set some meaningful milestones and benchmarks before. So that's the reason for the target below. So this is the, essentially, the beginning of the wedge, and you can see from the top black line to the red line, those are the emissions that you need to avoid incurring over the next, to 2030. And then the green wedge is what you would want to try and reduce. This next slide shows you the impact of policies that are on the books already, federal and state policies. So the top kind of lavender-purple-ish wedge refers to the federal fuel economy, which is the corporate average fuel economy standards. And so the, these are, this is based on 2011 model-year vehicles, which are expected to achieve 24.1 miles per gallon on average. And so the assumption here in this model is that all of the vehicles on the road by 2030 will have the 2011 model-year fuel economy. And this law is being implemented, is on the books. The next wedge down, the lighter blue wedge, which says state clean energy standard, this refers to our renewable portfolio standard, which we have here in Washington State, and that is, mandates a 15% renewable energy and cost-effective conservation by 2020. So what we did here was we just modeled that same 15% out to 2030. So that's what you see is on the books. And the renewable portfolio standard is something that gets brought up regularly in each legislative session and will definitely be a big part of this legislative session. There's a lot of activity around what happens with the renewable portfolio standard. But for now, and for the purposes of this discussion, we assume that it is still in place at the levels that, 15% through 2030. And the final wedge that's blue, navy blue, which says state energy code, refers to our state energy code here in Washington, which requires achieving a 70% reduction in annual net energy consumption for new residential and commercial buildings below 2006 levels by 2031. So those, each of those wedges represents what will happen in Everett, assuming all are implemented. And this doesn't always happen, as I told your colleagues at the city, we don't always see the top three wedges ending up working so closely to the baseline year. Oftentimes, it's sometimes below, sometimes above, so this is one of the first times, and I think we've done about 15 or so, 20 of these, the first time I remember looking at it, wow. So in this particular case, based on the growth factor, Everett would achieve its baseline emissions, or the goal, by 2030. So you just have to focus on the bigger wedge below. So in this case, what we have done here, again, very important to emphasize, no decisions or choices have been made about targets here. These are all essentially scenario planning, and it would really be up to the city to determine which of these they wanted to push or not. But in order to do the wedge, we had to make decisions, and we had to choose some. So in this case, we would propose you could go for a 40% cleaner vehicle, fuels and vehicles. You could try for a 25% reduction in vehicle miles traveled, and then a 30% reduction of natural gas used for heating. Another thing I would say about your carbon wedge analysis and as well as your energy map compared to others we've done, you already start with fairly clean power, and any community that starts with clean power ends up really having to focus on transportation measures in terms of reducing their carbon. So in communities where there's a lot of coal in their portfolio, you will see wedges that are, that, where we show what it would take to reduce coal to not being part of the portfolio at all, and that becomes a pretty big wedge. But this is a different situation, more like Seattle and city-light customers. So then, these next few slides are the same slide as what I just showed you, in terms of the image and the graphic, but then different possible first actions. And we will be working with the city, and when we present our final product to the city, it will actually have a memo with many different strategies to consider. But in this case, just for you to begin to think about what you might do in order to achieve some of these wedges. One potential first action would be to partner with Snohomish PUD, Everett Transit, the Port of Everett, on transportation electrification. And when we met with the staff, we had a, began a conversation with that. And the staff was very interested in asking us how we would go about estimating what the carbon reduction would be with different scenarios of substituting in either electrified transportation or other lower-carbon fuels for buses and cars, et cetera, and the fleet. With regard to the vehicle miles traveled reduction, you, one possible action would be to enhance the commute trip reduction program in partnership with the State of Washington and local employers. And then with regard to your building energy efficiency, there's a regional code collaboration effort that King County is very involved with, and that one of the actions you could do is adopt a stretch energy code. As I told the staff, we have a very aggressive energy code in Washington, and so when we talk to, when we get into the details of how our city is actually going to achieve these reduction, we end up talking a lot about energy efficiency and seeing what is possible. And I guess I should say, in terms of all of this, none of these paths are easy, but they are being explored and successfully adopted in lots of different ways, not only in our region, but also around the world. So when it comes to stretch energy codes, we've done a lot of work looking at how energy codes can be stretched, and also all the challenges that come with that. Building energy benchmarking requirements for public and commercial buildings is another avenue that several cities are pursuing, Seattle and Portland in particular, but also some of the other cities that we've worked with. So the summary is, there are existing laws, and they're very important, and they will help you get to some of your goal, but they alone do not achieve the full target, and bold action partnerships, planning are needed to meet ambitious carbon reduction goals. And that's my brief presentation. Thank you very much. I really appreciate this opportunity.
Questions?
This is very interesting, and I love the graphs.
Thank you.
Very technical information, and graphically, it's presented in an easy-to-understand manner, so I appreciate that. Is this, the other cities that you mentioned that have adopted a program similar to this, have they all adopted a 50% reduction by 2030, or have they gone 40% by 2040, or 50 by 2050, or what's the usual, the typical?
Right. So this goal-setting issue has actually been, excuse the pun, a bit of a moving target. And part of that is because the science has been changing and has been indicating that the reductions that originally some of our cities were trying to achieve need to be much faster, sooner. So part of what happens, has happened with our cities, when you ask all of the cities, since we've worked with 22, and it's been over seven years, most of our earlier cities had adopted the goals that had come out from the Kyoto Protocol, so they were mostly looking at 80% reduction by 2050, where that, those were the goals that we originally were dealing with. And then we would try and figure out which baseline year we would, they would use for what that 80% would be of, and we would encourage them to use a baseline year that was as recent as possible, both because we could model it, and also because the emissions would generally be, might be higher than they would be if it back in 1990. So originally, there was the 80% of 1990 by 2050.
So if you look at the slope of the line for the target, is it the same slope, whether it's 80% by 2050?
Right, correct. That's actually right. And, well, we did this for Issaquah, we did 2050 goals for Issaquah and for Kirkland, and a couple of other communities, and some of our communities in Idaho, definitely for Boise, I think also, and Beaverton. So yes, the slope of the line is not the issue, and we, sort of what we did was, we said, okay, here's where you're headed in 2050, but let's look at 2030.
It's really your measuring point.
Yeah, it's a measuring point. But we have not been modeling the 2050 goals in the last two or three years. They seem really irrelevant in some ways to me, or they're distracting, actually, because I think it's, the change is so rapid, and I also don't think they're actionable. So I don't think that it helps the cities to make decisions. The other thing I would say about the graphics, I really appreciate your comment about that. When I first started doing this work seven years ago, part of, part of why we have those graphics is that I just found it very confusing to understand all of this, and there was so much complex math information, and it was pretty dense. And most of the mayors and city council members that we work with really need to be able to talk to people about this, and I thought visually. And then, of course, this work that we're doing is modeled, actually, after work that was started in Princeton University. So this carbon wedge analysis is work that's modeled out, and the same with the energy flow maps. You can Google the United States Government's Energy Flow Map, it's actually pretty fascinating, and Washington State has one, too. So we are trying to use the tools of the trade that are there. And I don't know if Derek has anything to say about this, SEI does this work all over the world, so, and so that's the right answer on that, right? Yeah.
Alex?
Thank you. So you mentioned that for cities with cleaner energy portfolios such as ours, one of the bigger conversations that we have in areas we do focus on is transit, which is something we haven't talked about at all here.
I'm sure.
Out of curiosity, when you're talking about 25% reduction in vehicle miles traveled, and looking at some of the recent studies that come out with ride-share programs such as Car2Go, how do you see that factoring into the planning?
Right. So we try wherever we can to model all of those different solutions. So that's why I use a term that isn't that eco-mobility term. I've been thinking a lot about that, because I'm not even sure it necessarily means anything in terms of planners' world. I should talk to my planner friends and see if that's the case. But we're trying to demonstrate that there's a wide range of solutions, and so there, ride-sharing is one that we're actually very interested in, and trying to figure out how much the Lyft and Reach Now and Car2Go and all of these, and Uber, all these different new entrants into the market, how can we model them, and are they carbon climate solutions or not? One of the things that we've been learning about Uber is that, in fact, the streets in most cities are now flooded with so many Uber cars zipping around all the time trying to catch, so they, so in fact, they are causing more congestion and more carbon emissions, unless they're electric vehicles and they're powered, and the cars are powered not by coal. So I don't know, Derek, have you been modeling the, any of these different, come on up, so you can be heard? But we have, we, when you see the suite of solutions that we offer, they're definitely listed, and pedestrian, biking, and all of that. Do you have anything to say about this?
I guess, just quickly, we haven't modeled the effects of Uber and other ride-sharing services explicitly. Most of the research we've done shows that, you know, the real pathway to reducing congestion is through public transit, dedicated bus lanes, bus rapid transit, and things of that nature, that really reduce the need for cars.
Have you had an opportunity with some of these early adopters to track their progress in terms of the line, you know, and how they're matching up?
Yes, and your question is a very good one, because one of the challenges that we had early in the program, and still, is how do we track? Because this is a snapshot, and there are so many different ways of tracking, and in fact, Derek and I were speaking in the car as we were coming up about how this is, this is just these energy pieces, and we're not, we're not talking about consumption, so there's lots of different complexity involved in figuring out how a city is doing. City of Bellevue uses, or works with, a consultant called Scope Five, and they've been working with them for now three or four years, which means that they are really beginning to amass a good amount of data and learn from it. King County has been evaluating different providers to track their emissions. They have done a consumption-based inventory, and so they're, they're trying to figure that out. City of Seattle actually works with SEI, so. So the question of how to monitor progress is one that we're really, I'm really looking at right now. Most of our cities, it's really been just this year, this past year, honestly, where a lot of them have really gotten going. It tends to take a couple of years sometimes, from the time that they have an energy map and a carbon wedge analysis, to the point where they adopt the climate plan and the strategies, because the work you need to do in order to evaluate the different strategies, and then choose them, and then have the blessing, the political blessing, is a piece of it. So there are some other firms that I think are also helping cities track So there are some other firms that I think are also helping cities track this. It is not work that we do, but it is probably work that SEI could do with our partner cities going forward.
So, and I'm still coming on board and understanding what's going on. So is there actually a strategy that you are working on for the city of Everett?
No, this is the very beginning of our engagement with, with Everett. So what we were asked to do at this stage was to provide these tools, these carbon math tools. And we will also be writing a memo of strategies and options, and then we will present, I think, both. I've looked to, to the city council, but certainly this carbon wedge analysis and these slides, and then depending on what staff want, also the memo. We actually, we're, SEI and Climate Solutions actually have drafted that memo already, and we're going back and forth right now between us, and then we'll present it to the city staff, and then presumably to the city council.
And the next question is, obviously, partners. So as you present this to the city of Everett, are you going to be talking about potential partners that might be interested, like Snowpud?
Right.
Those folks? Okay.
So yes, and so one of the really exciting opportunities here is that we, we worked in the city of Edmonds four, four and a half years ago, five years ago, and worked with Snowpud there. And Climate Solutions has had a very long, close relationship with Snowpud, largely because Steve Klein was somebody that we just were all very close to. We learned a lot from Steve, actually. He taught us a lot. He certainly taught me a lot, particularly when we were doing the New Energy Cities Program in Edmonds about four years ago. And they just have a really terrific staff, actually, at Snowpud, too, very talented. And, and Snowpud has tried very hard to push different envelopes in renewable energy and received a lot of really nationally-recognized grants. And so their innovation is something that's very exciting to me. And they are extremely interested in the fact that we have been working with Everett, and are very curious to see if there would be a way that they could partner more deeply. And I'm particularly excited about that, because, you know, we've now been in four states and 22 communities. I think we've worked with seven or eight utilities, and not all of them are excited about this work. And so it's exciting to me to have a utility that's really excited. And, and the county has also done a lot of really interesting work. About three years ago, I worked with the county staff and helped write a grant for them that they got to do work. And Lisa DeLudi, who's there, is still there, and is a really, really great climate planner. So you have some great assets here that I would love to see them all potentially come together in the ways that work for Everett and for Sohamish County. They may or may not be the same as what King County has done, but one of the things that King County has really achieved by aggregating 13 cities is this united block of, of cities that are learning together and sharing what they're learning, and oftentimes cost-sharing also. So I, I see some real value in that possibility, and I'm very excited to see how Snowpud might want to be involved.
Your excitement is contagious.
We just finished up a charter review process, and in that process, we had some comment around the need to maybe form a committee around climate change.
Oh, great.
But the focus was to be more on what individuals can do.
Right.
So a lot of your recommendations are more of what cities can do, and so I'm wondering if there's been, if there are some successful examples of other cities that have either supported climate, or emissions reductions for individuals. So one example might be that we have the CHIP program here in Everett, which provides loans for low-income families so that they can do renovations on their, on their homes. So it's usually a broken roof or, you know, foundation fixes, but those could certainly be used for, you know, efficiency and improving heating and things like that. So if you can either give some or include that in your report for suggestions for individuals.
Yes, yes. It's a, the individual behavior change, Climate Solutions is in strategic planning right now, and I'm actually also staffing that. And so one of the, and I was just working on a slide on this last night, about the variety of behavior change broadly, not just individual, but business behavior change, all the behavior changes that are likely required. And we at Climate Solutions have not actually done that in the past, you know, focused on that as much. But we are going to have a robust conversation on Thursday at our strategic planning retreat about whether we need to get more engaged in that. And definitely, I can give you examples of cities that have done that, for sure.
Thank you.
Richard.
Just, I'm really glad that you're here. I'm glad we're starting this discussion.
Thank you.
I just want to emphasize that, you know, although there's obviously benefits, you know, locally, but it's really a, sort of a global imperative, and that the people who are going to benefit the most from our leadership in this are maybe not be us, ourselves, but people in, like, Sub-Saharan Africa who are really going to get, or low-lying countries. And although we do, you know, we are right next to the sea here, you know, and there could be some rising, but we're probably not going to feel the worst effects of, of it. And that, I think, is reason enough to pursue this. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you very much for saying that. I am often asked, why do we need to do this here in the Northwest? Our power is already so clean, and, and what, you know, it's China and India and the growing, developing economies of the world that need to do this work. And the truth is, is from my point of view, one of the reasons why we have to do this is, is because our power is so clean to start. So to figure out how we can go the distance when we already have a head start seems very important. It also matters enormously in the United States, the country. The Northwest is looked to for leadership in this area, and so if we let the rest of the country down with our relatively clean power grid, when, which, there are economic challenges by having our cheaper electricity, so there's issues in terms of how things pencil out. But ultimately, what we're trying, what Climate Solutions is trying to build is a West Coast climate campaign, or a block of climate action joining California to the South and B.C. to the North. And just that, those four entities comprise the world's fifth-largest economy. So if we actually can achieve these goals in that area, that's meaningful carbon reduction, and it helps the, give wind to the sails to other carbon reduction efforts throughout the country. And we at Climate Solutions work very closely with the other regional climate groups, and they're, they're watch us very carefully. Yeah.
I would chime in with Lauren, and I think the graphs are good, because the people we need to talk to, a lot of times, that's going to help us get there.
Yeah.
The question I have is, you talked about new construction, and as a planning commission, our jobs are thinking of the future, and
Right.
It's easy to help those who are going to start construction today, or in 10 years or 15 years, build and consume more efficiently. But what are we going to do with the biggest gain that we really have is in those pre-80 homes and those pre-80 businesses?
Right.
I mean, if we could bite off 15% of that, it would be more than anything we could do as a planning commission moving forward. So I was excited to hear that you guys are now going to start talking about the creatures we are, and how many buttons we push and light switches and those kinds of things. So how are, how are you going to model that into helping fix previous things? Because the, again, the planning commission doesn't have anything to do with that, nor the, the city council or county council. It's more of a, it's more of a personal, I'm sorry. You get it. You're shaking your head the right direction, so you understand what I'm saying.
Yeah. So one thing I would say, I will answer about the existing, but in terms of new construction, in fact, to reach those fairly aggressive goals, the targets for new construction really have to be, you know, 80% more efficient, if not carbon neutral. And so, so a big part of how you get to 2030 is with what you do with new construction. So that becomes a very, very important target to achieve.
To fix the previous history?
No, that's the, that's for anything new that gets built and permitted going forward.
No, I understand that.
But you're right.
But the overall goal, if we're really going to achieve this goal.
You have to, you have to attack the existing. Yes, and it is very complicated. Commercial and industrial has generally penciled out much better than residential. And that's why, you know, there's folks like Mac Miller, McDonald Miller, and I'm thinking of our board member, I'm just spacing on their company right now, but there are a lot of, what's that? Yeah. These companies that are doing quite well by doing industrial and commercial energy efficiency. But it's a very tough nut to crack when you get to the residential for a wide variety of reasons. We, we have done a fair amount of work on that, at least in helping cities understand what the challenges and opportunities are, and that would definitely be a significant part of our report, because the conservation and energy efficiency is critically important. And the less we use, the less we have to create. And so it's, it's really, the megawatts, as we call them, are probably some of the most important we can figure out how to do. And there's an enormous amount of learning that we achieved through the stimulus funding that came through in 2009 and 2010 in communities throughout the country that were able to experiment with a variety of pilots. But money is still a challenge, and then it's very difficult to, to achieve the levels of reduction in energy use that we need in the existing structures.
Thank you. Alex.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to follow up really quick. You mentioned that one of the greater challenges for energy reduction came out of residential spaces. What kind of strategies are you kind of looking at, observing, and like, perceiving that, you know, future buildings should look like to, you know, address those energy challenges? And if you have a chance, if you can, we're about to later talk about detached accessory dwelling units, and I read about their energy efficiency benefits. I don't know, you are an expert, so I don't know if there's anything you could speak to add and enrich that conversation.
Okay. So one thing, just to be really clear, I'm actually not an expert in buildings, so I would never present myself as such. I will defer to Derek if he has anything that he can add to this. There, there are, in terms of existing buildings, what we were involved in during the, with the stimulus funding was community power works in Seattle. Oregon, Oregon had a similar entity that we were working with also. And then up in Watcom County, there was another entity that received funding and did some pilot work there. And we also, a couple of our other communities received funding from the government to experiment. And what we, what those programs largely were, were loan-loss reserve funds that were established to de-risk the bank loaning to the customers, and to people who are willing to have their houses retrofitted. And then really well-done assessments of what the buildings could achieve with their energy efficiencies, so that, back to the question of Commissioner Member Beck's question about monitoring, a key piece of this has to be the measurement and verification that the, the energy efficiencies were actually achieved. So enormous amount of work went into that. A critical aspect of the programs are the contractors, and how are the contractors incentivized to suggest the, the energy efficiency measures, and how to work with contractors so that energy efficiency becomes something that they find profitable to pursue. Then there were the questions of how you get customers to not necessarily think they need windows, you know, more efficient windows first, because that can be a very big-ticket item. And so instead, you talk about insulation and lots of other ways that you can get the house to be more energy-efficient before you talk about a large investment in windows. So there's a lot of specifics that we learned through all those pilot programs. And the great thing about the pilot programs is that we've, we've learned enough to design very good ones now. The challenge is the money. And we'll have to see what happens in the election. We'll be watching the election very closely, because there's been talk, if Hillary Clinton were elected, that there would be a big infrastructure investment, and a big piece of it was, could be, is slated to be in clean energy. So we're looking very closely to see what that might look like, and whether the stimulus funding that went through the Obama administration could be quadrupled, and all the lessons that were learned could be achieved by others. So there's a lot in that area, and, and the Department of Energy did a very, very good job in executing on that stimulus funding, and they have done an excellent job of documenting best practices and monitoring, verification, and all of it. So the, the good news is, is that the models exist, and the data are there, and we know how to do it. We just have to have the will, and the desire, and the money.
So a scientist can administer an energy department, huh?
Yes. He's actually, well, yes, absolutely, first of all. But yeah, the, there's a really amazing group of people kind of buried deep inside DOE. I've gone to see them a couple of times. And, and, you know, it's, most of, a lot of people still are working on big energy and nuclear energy and other pieces like that, but they have a great, great group of really talented people at the Department of Energy who administered that program very well.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm, I would open it up. You're good? Okay. Public and I would first like to ask Councilman Paul Roberts to come forward, if he would, please.
He's got the whole world in his hands.
[laughter] Fine presentation, but I won't take mine, Mr. Chairman. Just a little context, yes, I'm Councilmember Paul Roberts, but another hat I wear is as the Chair of the Puget Sound Clean Air Agency, and the principal mission of a clean air agency is to deal with, among other things, air pollution, of course, but climate change issues which are associated with air pollutants. These are great questions that you've asked tonight, and I first want to thank the Climate Solutions Group, Eileen and Derek, for their work. I would just tell you, as a member of the city council, my concern in wanting to make sure we were taking this next step is that you can't measure, you can't manage what you don't measure, and we needed to get some good baseline information, and I want to come back to that in a minute. I provided you with some, with the written testimony and some information. I'm not going to read that, but I just want to cover very quickly that the basic science that we have all read about and continue to read about really was formed in the mid-late 50s. And by 1960, Dr. Charles Keeling and his group came to that conclusion that the increase in carbon dioxide was, corresponded with the amount of fossil fuels being burned. But I wanted to point out something, and this is part of a presentation I've done many times, so it's kind of fun. So here's this globe. It's 16 inches in diameter. I'm looking to the engineer in the group. 16 inches in diameter, so an inch roughly is 500 miles, and that's roughly the equivalency. The troposphere, the atmosphere that we're dealing with is the troposphere. All of the other parts of the atmosphere are interesting, but the troposphere is where all weather exists. The troposphere is a very thin layer of atmosphere around the Earth. And so I brought a dime. The dime represents less than, about a, about a 32nd of an inch, and it is twice the thickness of the troposphere. Into that layer of the atmosphere, 35 billion tons a year of carbon dioxide are put in. So the heat-trapping process is accelerating, and that's what some of the data is telling, in fact, frankly, almost all of the data is telling, that, telling us that there's an acceleration of these processes, and therefore, the need to respond is really urgent. And so in looking at this question, and wanting the Climate Solutions Group to come and, and share with us the kind of work that they've been doing throughout the region, we needed to have baseline information. And I'll come back to that in, in just a moment. But the issue is, what I But the issue is, what I sometimes can call climate stopping distance. Everybody has had to go through driver's training, and everybody understands the process of braking. So the quicker we can start to reduce carbon dioxide and other greenhouse gases in the atmosphere, the quicker we can move things in a different direction. And we have been doing a lot of really good work. I want to compliment this commission and the city. We've been actually working since 2006 to begin to lay a foundation to deal with this work, so there's some good work that's been done, but more needs to be done. And so, and I'll take this down, I think the point's been made, but the issue that is now before us is dealing with mitigation, adaptation, and really economic development. So we've heard tonight a little bit about the mitigation process, so we look at our carbon footprint and how we might reduce that. The adaptation process was really very well documented, and a lot of very good work is being done in the work of the City of Everett Comprehensive Plan Climate Change and Sustainability Element Background Report. And I think some of you have seen this, if not read it thoroughly. It is a great piece of work to start with, and I commend it to you to take another look. I went back through it this week in anticipation of just coming before you tonight. But the other piece that I want to mention is that Everett doesn't operate in a vacuum. It's not alone, and we at the Puget Sound Clean Air Agency have been working with the Puget Sound Regional Council as we update our transportation plans, land use plans, and other planning documents to integrate mitigation and adaptation elements in those plans and basically take that next step, accelerate this work. And I hope when it comes to the council, we as the council will ask you to help us do that, and I've left some in the material I provided you. I've put some links in there to, excuse me, some of the areas that you might look at online. The adaptation and mitigation piece is also, needs to, it also needs to be combined with an economic development piece. And quite candidly, there are a few places that I know of in the United States or anywhere in the world that are better suited to deal with the green economy than here. And I'm working on a proposal with the Association of Washington Cities, their Center for Quality Communities, talking about building that green economy here. When we think about the kinds of changes that are quite certain to take place on the globe, they will deal with water, energy, agriculture and forestry, and building materials. Our community, and Eileen mentioned it, the area here in Puget Sound, but also the area from British Columbia to Portland, is probably as well-suited to deal with those issues as any place on the planet. We have a very supportive business, legal, environmental, insurance, engineering, research capability. We have proximity to IT technology, which will be integrated in all of those business areas. We have businesses that have international links. We have a trained workforce. We have the land labor and capacity to build the things that the world needs. And to some degree, that's already happening right here in our backyard as new technologies emerge. The need to develop the green economy is here now, and we're going to be working, I am working, as I say, working with Association of Washington Cities and the Center for Quality Communities to come forward with proposals to do just that. So the time is now, and I think the opportunities are there, and it is exciting, and it's not a matter of having our hair on fire, it's a matter of getting real focused on the work that needs to be done to mitigate, adapt, and respond to a changing climate. So I just want to thank you for taking the time. I want to thank Eileen and Derek, and I just want to say, from my perspective, we're very dedicated to continue to do this work, wearing the hat of the Clean Air Agency as well as the City Council. So I'm happy to answer questions, but I know you've got other presentations tonight, so I don't want to take up too much time. Thanks for the few minutes you've given me.
Thank you, Paul. Are there any questions?
Take my world and go home.
Yes. Be careful with it.
I am very careful. No volleyball.
Okay. Anyone from the audience who would like to speak on this issue? Yes?
My name is Swabe Porowski. I came here altogether different interests, but as an architect, I am continuing, as you can probably hear it, I was not born here. And I have been in architectural practice in the United States for 38 years, and then five in Europe before that. And going 40 years on, I am still puzzled at the obscenity of 6,500 square foot domicile for a couple. I was recently asked to fix the situation in a 6,000 square foot house because it just wasn't working, so would I please add 1,500? And nobody ever thought that it was badly designed, it was too big, it was a waste box, it was a waste of energy, waste of resources, waste of everything, including the good energies of a couple that lived there. What would happen if Everett considered a progressive, I know that taxation is done by the county, but progressive building permit costs? Let's say the first $500 costs one-half of a percent of the construction cost. The next $500 adds another percent, and so forth, and so forth, so that perhaps Everett could all of a sudden emerge as that one community where it is okay to have a 4,000 square foot home that is large for a family, and it is absolutely perfectly fine to live a theatrically wonderful life, because architecture is smoke and mirrors, in a house that's 1,200 square feet. With my wife in Woodinville, we live in a house that's 1,410 feet, and sometimes I feel like we're two peas in a bucket, because even that is large. It is useless, it is not 21st century. So perhaps you can cogitate.
Thank you.
And pass the word to the council that perhaps that's an idea. Thank you very much.
Could you fill out a sheet, sir? I'm sorry, I was expediting the process here. Okay. Anyone else? Okay, let's move on to item number two, and David Stallheim will...
All right. David Stallheim, Long Range Planning Manager, and one of the things we've been able to do this, this summer is to help support and get the assistance of, oh, wrong one. Mehdi, you're not going to do the ADU thing tonight, right? Is a couple interns within our department, and so tonight Mehdi Brazel is going to talk about her work that she has been doing for the last couple weeks, so I'll turn it over to Mehdi.
Good evening, and thank you, David. I'm here to present to you a land capacity analysis for the metro Everett area. So tonight, I will go ahead and introduce myself and tell you a little bit about what I'm, why I'm here. Also, an overview of my project that I've been doing, as well as the purpose for that project, the, a few of the processes, not all of them, and the results. My name's Mehdi Brazel. I am currently a student at Western Washington University, and I am working towards a bachelor's in urban planning and sustainable development. So for the summer, of course, I've been interning here at the City of Everett under the guidance of David Stallheim, and we've been working on this land capacity project. So the summary of my project is using geographic information systems to assess the land capacity within metro Everett. I did this by replicating processes from the 2012 Buildable Lands Report. Mind you, this was implemented by Snohomish County, so metro Everett is a lot smaller. So a few of the processes were not applicable to my metro Everett project here. So why is this important? Within the next 10 to 20 years, Everett is estimated to have a significant population growth. This gives the City of Everett a suitable and reliable inventory of developable parcels within metro Everett. And let's just say we all want to see Everett flourish. A few of the processes that were used for this was, I'm going to just tell you two, just because all the processes would kind of bore you. So the first one is the formation of economic units. So an economic unit is a multi-parcel plot of land that consists of, that typically has a common owner or are abutted to one another. Many of these parcels have one building over many parcels. So the Snohomish Assessor's Office, oh, excuse me, this is the, an example of an economic unit. So as you can see here, we have the Group Health Cooperative Center in eastern metro Everett. It consists of eight separate parcels, and the formation of an economic unit would create one whole unit. This is really just for reference and data analyses. The Snohomish County Assessor tends to place all improvement value on one single parcel of a multi-parcel facility. So when it comes to classifying land status, which I'll get to later on, this tends to project that the seven parcels on the upper, on the left picture here, on the left side, the upper seven parcels tend to look like they are redevelopable because they have zero improvement on them, whereas that single 6,000 square foot parcel on the bottom there has $9 million worth of improvements. So the formation of an economic unit spans the value across all those parcels. So that was the first process of my project here. The second process would be classifying the status of each individual parcel. Like I said previously, having that those seven parcels look as redevelopable when it has a part of a $9 million building on it, gives it the look of it being vacant. Some of the classifying statuses are on the screen here. Vacant, of course, would be allocated as less than $2,000 worth of improvements on that piece of parcel, or rather, a parking lot. That is one of the main types of parcels in metro Everett right now, as well as the redevelopment, redevelopmental parcels. This is defined by a land ratio of below 1.0. Land value ratio is the improvement of the parcel, so any existing buildings, the price of those existing buildings on that parcel, over the amount of value the land has. So when you get something that is below 1.0, it means that the improvements on the land tend to be less than the value of the land. After I had found, I went through each individual parcel and classified each land status. I went to Alan Giffen, who has, he's a very, very knowledgeable man about metro Everett. He approved that this method was a great way to assess certain parcels in the metro Everett area. As you can see in the orange, is all redevelopment, redevelopmental parcels. They have the potential of redevelopment, less than 1.0. The total amount, the results of the land status analysis, is that 50% of the parcels within metro Everett have some sort of redevelopmental potential, and that's with that ALI ratio of less than 1.0. This also includes partially used, which is usually large swaths of land with just minor buildings that we don't see, will be going anywhere, such as churches, but they also have other parts of that property that could definitely be developed on, as well as pending. There's not too many parcels in metro Everett that are pending, but we hope to see that So after we looked at the land status, we took all the developable parcels in those zones and then did some calculations according to two density, zoning densities. One would be against the pre-2012 development patterns, and then one is a really high alternative, as you can see on the right there, there's some very high numbers there, and that would, if you look at B1, that would indicate 20 persons per acre, or 20 units per acre, excuse me. So the overall results, we found that 182 acres in metro Everett are redevelopable. Doing some mathematical calculations, we found that according to the pre-2012 development pattern, metro Everett can potentially hold another 9,591 units. This, assuming that there are two people per unit and a 95% capacity, or a 90% occupancy of those units, this increases the population to 18,934 persons. If we looked at the high density, high zoning density, of course, using the 182 buildable acres, it increases the housing capacity for 14,000, of 14,695 units, and then, of course, increases the population to 27,921 extra persons within the metro Everett area. Now, a lot of these analyses indicate that all of metro Everett, all those redevelopable parcels would be redeveloped. So to actually get that amount would be very unlikely because there are certain areas in metro Everett that look redevelopable on that map, but probably won't be redeveloped. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. No, that made a lot of sense.
Thank you.
Well done.
I was very nervous, so. Yes, sir.
We can't let you get away without at least one question.
Right.
The Buildable Lands Report, as you know, if you've studied it, you know that it takes into account things like market availability of land.
Yes.
Did your, did that end result reflect that?
It did not.
It did not. So that's a theoretical absolute maximum.
Correct. Completely, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. No more questions? That was it, okay. I'm sorry, Ellen.
Do we have a similar analysis for the rest of the city, or will we?
We had a buildable lands and land, both the population and employment capacity analysis for the entire city, and some, we did a few alternatives for the update of the comprehensive plan that we completed last year. And so, I guess the short answer to your question is, yes, we do have that. We haven't done it to the level of this specific subarea previously, and so that's part of Mehdi's work to supplement the work that we're doing for the metro subarea plan to identify both population capacity and, don't think Mehdi will probably get to that, but employment capacity is another thing that we will be looking at with the subarea plan.
It seems like it's very valuable information to have.
And at this scale...
Got a keeper on board for a while.
Yeah, she's doing great work for us, but the basis, this is just a little bit of an update to some of the work that we're doing for metro. We haven't done enough yet to be able to present all of this data, but that's part of what we'll go into. The subarea plan is looking at capacity of both employment and the housing, and this is pretty preliminary data. We'll do some adjustments, probably do some estimates of market factors that might reduce some of the assumptions that we, the math would otherwise suggest. Anything you would like to add, David?
Great presentation.
Yes. Okay, we have one person that signed up to speak tonight, and then... Okay, we have one person that signed up to speak tonight, and that is Ryan Countryman.
All right. Well, thank you for having me here. My name is Ryan Countryman. I live at 6618 Southeast Fourth Place, and that's in Renton, Washington. I'm a property owner. I've got some property that's in the designated Metro Center for Everett with R4 zoning and some other property that's just a little bit outside the metro area with R3 zoning. So, I'm here to talk about the zoning and some thoughts that I have as somebody who would eventually be redeveloping in the metro area. But I also want to just kind of, before I get in, I want to thank Mehdi for not beating up on the Buildable Lands report too much, having worked on that. It was a relief to see that the city's generally in agreement about, you know, what parcels might develop or redevelop. So, that was a relief to me. But the basic goal here is how do you create a more dynamic area around downtown Everett? More activity happening, more private investment, more jobs and housing opportunities. Downtown Everett is, you know, you've got your core downtown area that's got the B3 zoning, you've got Broadway that runs through it, and then most of the rest of the metro area is over by Everett Station with the C2ES zoning. And then, as I mentioned, there's other higher density residential zones, partly in the metro area that's designated and partly outside. One of the key challenges that the city has is that the assumption for the B3 zone is 100 units, according to Buildable Lands, or 125 units an acre for this new analysis. But it is actually a two-sided ledger. The assumption also is that for each, for the average redevelopment, you're getting 100 or 125 units an acre plus 300 employees an acre. Okay? So, what does that look like in B3 zoning? Well, to get 100 or 125 units an acre, that's a four or five, four or five floors of apartments or condos. 300 employees an acre, if you kind of take your typical office employment densities, that's another five floors of office space. And then, if you've got five floors of office space, five floors of residential, you're going to need another five floors of parking to make that work. So, one of the challenges is that with the B3 zone, that you have targets that don't match up with the allowed height limits. Parts of downtown Everett do allow heights in excess of 15 stories. But there's also B3 zoning over by Providence Hospital with a 45-foot height limit. If Everett is to actually achieve these high-growth targets, there needs to be some flexibility provided to property owners who have intent to do more ambitious construction. Oftentimes, you see that when you do your pro forma for a large apartment building, that you're actually losing money on your lower floors, but you're building those lower floors to subsidize the height to the upper floors where you can get a premium for your views. So, one of the things that I hope comes out of this exercise of revisiting Metro Everett is some changes in the heights corresponding to the type of assumptions that are in place. Other things that I think would be helpful would be the steps to prevent underbuilding. There's a, Everett has a historic pattern of lots that are 6,000 square feet or so. And when you're redeveloping on that small of a parcel, it's hard to get a very dense development. So, my, one of my suggestions would be that throughout the metro area, to take steps to prevent underbuilding of sites. On Broadway, the 3100 block, about three or four years ago, there was a triplex built that fronts on Broadway. Sorry, that triplex might be fine in a multifamily zone, a block or two off of Broadway, but it's a waste of land on Broadway. The city zoning in some of these places should require land assembly to allow the higher density or simply use code enforcement to get the property owners to maintain the buildings that they have until somebody else can come along and assemble a larger site. Then, other things that should happen is some steps to kind of build up around the metro area, and this is where my interest comes in specifically with things like the R4 and R5 zoning. I used to live just south of downtown Everett for a long time, and the neighborhood was actually more vibrant in some ways in the past than it is now because there were more non-residential uses in these multifamily zones than there are today. There's a couple of them, just a couple of quick examples. There was a building that had originally been a corner market with the apartment in the back, and I don't, I had no idea when the market closed. It looked like it was built in the 1920s or 30s. But when I moved into the neighborhood, the area that had been, the store part of that market was used as a karate studio. That building eventually, karate studio closed. Zoning doesn't allow karate studio. You can have some other office uses, but it got converted to an awkward house. Then, there was a fire. Place got bulldozed and a duplex got built on a site where the zoning would have allowed four or five units, but because of lack of land assembly, you got a duplex instead. So, that duplex is going to make it harder to redevelop that zone that should have been built at a higher density. So, some of these zones in the downtown area or around the downtown, look at preventing underbuilding. You get a lot of places where somebody knocks down an old house, puts in four units. It's a nice construction type. Personally, I think that should be allowed in a lot more of the city than it is beyond just the multifamily zones. But what you end up getting is a place where you're planning on, you know, depending on the assumptions, 58 or 76 units an acre, and you're getting, well, four units on a 6,000 square foot parcel, 29 units an acre. So, the more the city allows this kind of underbuilding, the harder it is to assemble the sites and redevelop. So, my suggestion would be that some of the zoning code be amended so that you can't underbuild these properties unless everything around you has been redeveloped already and then you're sort of that, you know, the up house that got left over from that movie. And then, in that case, then you can build your four units on your 6,000 square foot lot, but until then, you can't do anything unless you get assembled. And the other thing with the more vibrant neighborhoods, I kind of got off track on that, was that some of these areas to kind of liven up the neighborhoods in the interim as parcels get assembled for redevelopment would be to allow more non-residential uses in the multifamily zones than are currently allowed. Another example that used to be on Oaks, there's this neighbor of mine, you know, she'd had this pottery studio in a house that was two doors down from the house that she lived in, and that's how she made her living, is she ran a pottery studio out of a house. Then eventually, she got to the point where, you know, she had arthritis and kind of closed up the business, and now the house has been renovated. It looks very nice, but it's back to a house. And I know a lot of people don't like having businesses in their neighborhood, but there's a lot of people, myself included, that preferred living in a place where you've got little workshops and things happening. And so, allowing things that are kind of small-scale manufacturing or other things, if you go down Lombard up by Providence Hospital, there's an auto repair shop that's a non-conforming use. A lot of people might remember the Red Umbrella that's owned R1, so it's, or R2 maybe, it's outside of the downtown. But now that that business is closed, in theory, that building should go and become a house, which just doesn't make any sense. So, allowing the expanded non-residential uses as an interim use for many of the existing homes as they eventually get assembled, but then putting in zoning requirements so that they have to get assembled so that you're getting the larger scale development that you need to create the, you know, the critical mass of people to bring in things like transit. But if Everett's going to meet these ambitious growth targets, you've got to raise height limits in some areas, probably quite a few. You've got to count for the employment targets too because it's not just residential, because yes, Everett in theory can reach its employment target, but that's assuming that you get a lot of hotels and offices downtown, and even the new hotel downtown, it's what, six or eight stories? But it's not 15, there's no housing on top. So, you needed another five floors of apartments on top of the hotel to actually be on track to meet some of these higher targets. And then, steps to prevent the underbuilding of the smaller sites until they get assembled. And I'm not the only person who's working on land assembly around downtown Everett because you can see where things are going. You know, the city's got an excellent grid pattern, excellent views, a lot of good amenities. But, you know, it's not quite there for somebody to just roll in and buy up a whole block at once, so it's a slow process. And allowing that process a little bit more time by stopping the duplexes and other underdeveloped sites from coming in and ruining the long-term potential would be a great step. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ryan. Any questions, Ryan? Okay. Anybody else? Okay. That takes us to our item number three on the agenda. And Alan?
This is a workshop tonight to talk about possible code amendment to allow detached accessory dwelling units in the cities, in particular, single-family zones. And so, I'll start just by addressing what is a detached accessory dwelling unit. An accessory dwelling unit, whether attached or detached, is a secondary dwelling unit on the same property as a principal dwelling unit. In the case of a detached, obviously, that would not be attached to the principal dwelling unit. The Growth Management Act, a few, quite a few years ago, was amended to require cities to allow accessory dwelling units, but it did not dictate any specific standards as far as whether or not they're attached, detached, size, and a number of other things that allows the local community to determine. And we have allowed these attached accessory dwelling units even before the state law was amended. And the city has had, over the years, what, about 35 or so of these attached dwelling units. David's done some mapping, which is one of the exhibits in your packet that shows where attached accessory dwelling units have been developed in the city, but over a 20-year timeframe, that is not very many. Detached accessory dwelling units are not allowed in any of our single-family zones with the exception of the historic overlay zones. At your July 19 meeting, David presented some information that you considered at the time to at least agree to initiate consideration of a code amendment. And one of the things you had asked for is what were the standards for the 2010 recommendation that the Planning Commission had made to City Council, which at that time, City Council decided that they were not going to act upon the recommendation of the Planning Commission. And I'll just run through these fairly quickly, but probably one of the more significant pieces of that is that owner occupancy of the principal dwelling unit or the detached accessory dwelling unit was required. In other words, the owner of that property had two dwelling units and must live in one of those in order for you to, him to be able, he or she to have a detached, or excuse me, an accessory dwelling unit. And that's the current code requirement for the attached accessory dwelling unit as well. And I think that's, one of the things that's probably put a little bit of a damper on the, I won't say proliferation, but the number of accessory dwelling units that we've had built in the last 20 years under the existing code. The recommendation also in 2010 was that detached accessory dwelling units would only, and I'm just going to start saying DADUs now, on lots with alley access. And so, that would have, and I've got a map, I'll show you in a moment where that applied. Only one DADU per lot, minimum lot size at that time recommended was that you had to have at least 1,000 square feet more in your lot than the minimum for that zone. So, in the R2 zone, that would have been 6,000 square feet instead of five. In the R1 zone, did I say R2? R2 is 6,000 square feet. R1 would have had to have had 7,000 feet, and RS zoning, 10,000 square feet. A number of other standards here, and I won't talk about all of them, but quite a few standards here that went along with that recommendation. There were also quite a few design standards that went along with that, including architectural style that was compatible with the principal dwelling, similar siding and roofing materials, roof pitch, orientation to the street, privacy for abutting lots, in other words, where the placement of windows were on, say, a second story if it were located above a garage, and how that would have to be oriented so it's not looking into the backyard of, or the windows immediately across on the neighbor's lot. And so, quite a few design standards were part of that recommendation. The blue little rectangles or dots that you see on the map are the lots that, and this was a graphic that was produced in 2010, but in the R2 zone, which is primarily the Everett, North Everett area, north of the downtown area, and a couple of areas in the Lowell and Pinehurst neighborhoods, there were over 1,900 lots that would have qualified for an accessory dwelling unit under those 2010 recommended standards. In other words, they had more than, at least 1,000 square feet more than the minimum of that zone. And so, there were over 1,900 potential sites under those regulations in the R2 zone, and nearly 600 lots in the R1 zone. These areas are scattered about mostly North Everett, a little bit out off of Muckelteau Boulevard and the old, I forget the name of the old plat out there, but near Harborview Park, and a couple of areas south of the downtown, including Pinehurst area. You saw some pictures at your July 19 meeting. I won't show you all of them, but run through these fairly quickly. Most of these show a living unit above a detached garage. In some cases, the lower left picture here, there's a freestanding dwelling unit in a rear yard. It's not located above a garage. These, I think, were all out of Vancouver, British Columbia, where they call them laneway housing in Vancouver, BC. And these are some single-story and two-story with attached garages. These four shots are out of our historic overlay zone, where we have, the one on the upper left and lower left are actually the same building, just from different angles, where you can have a detached accessory dwelling unit in the historic overlay zone. And the term we use in that zoning is infield dwelling unit. And so, we have, I think, two or three, or at least three here that are located in those zones there, again, off of the alley, and we're kind of the pattern that we use for the recommended standards in the 2010 draft amendments, just went to something that we already had in our code that can work and has worked in a few instances. So, in your memo, and these are questions that were asked of, in your 2000, excuse me, your July 19 memo, and I think what, rather than read each of these, you've had them, you've looked at them before, I'm just going to put them on the screen for the benefit of the audience and as a refresher for the commission, a number of questions that relate to various standards that could be part of a code amendment. And I also want to point out that in your packet, we do have a spreadsheet that compared 15 other cities that we felt were either comparable by their size or just because they're neighbors of Everett, and a variety of different standards that apply to the detached accessory dwelling units that are allowed in those communities, with the exception of two communities, Edmonds and Bellevue, that do not allow detached ADUs, but all of the other jurisdictions do. And of all of those jurisdictions, Everett's 2010 recommended draft was far more restrictive and had a lot more requirements than any of the other existing regulations that are currently in effect in other communities. Some, all of them do require owner occupancy of one of the dwelling units, with the exception that Seattle is now considering allowing on lots, DADUs, without an owner occupancy requirement, but currently their code does require it.
It's 50% for Seattle. You have to, 50% owner occupied, you have to do a covenant, so.
And again, this was a one day's worth of research that went into that, so it wasn't exhaustive. And some of those standards by now probably could have changed because some, at least Seattle was considering a variety of amendments to allow even more. Seattle was considering a variety of amendments to allow even more accessory dwelling units within, in Seattle. So with that, and having all of these questions that you've looked at before, I just wanted to encourage you to ask questions of staff, take public comments tonight. I know we do have another gentleman, Mr. Demas, who has appeared before you before, has brought some of his own graphics to share with you tonight. But it's your meeting, feel free to, you know, ask staff questions at any point. But I guess the question for the commission tonight is whether or not we should continue exploring this as a code amendment, or if it's a bad idea that you're just not ready to move forward, then, you know, that's certainly within your purview tonight. So with that, I'll answer any questions if you have them for me.
Alan, can you go over the maps?
Sure.
Just to explain what they are.
So the maps in your packets?
Yeah, please.
So the first map is the one that shows, a lot of red dots on it, where it just says accessory dwelling units. That is where we have approved accessory dwelling units under the current regulations. These are all attached, and so built either within a house, a converted basement, or part of the house, or added, an addition onto the house, but attached to the principal dwelling. And so I think there were somewhere in the neighborhood of about 35 that had been approved in the last 20 years or so.
Can we get the addresses for these dots so we could go by and look at them?
Yes, we've got those.
Thanks.
The second map, which says accessory dwelling units, rear yard infill, these are the historic overlay zones, and it shows in the R2 color, the historic overlay zones are the three areas that are shown in kind of a, I guess, a light, very light tan color. And in order to have an infill dwelling unit in the R2 zone, you have to have enough lot area for duplex. And the idea there is instead of encouraging demolition of contributing structures in the historic overlay zone, to replace it with a duplex would be to leave the existing structure alone and build a detached accessory dwelling unit in the rear yard typically, off of the alley, rather than demolishing a contributing structure and impacting the neighborhood in that way. And so the red boxes within that map are the areas of the lots that have greater than 7,500 square feet, where you could have a detached accessory dwelling unit, or as what they're referred to in the overlay zone as an infill dwelling unit.
So is this current code, or is this, what would it be applied under the 2010 proposal?
This is current code.
Current code, okay.
So the first two maps are the current code.
So, Alan? So these are lots that are eligible for the infill housing.
On the second map, that's correct.
But they're not actual infill houses. Do we have any actual infill houses?
You showed, you showed some pictures of one in the historic.
Yeah, there were some in one of the earlier slides here.
I know of a few in Port Gardner, they're probably not permitted, but
Yeah.
But I know a few.
This one here is in the overlay zone, this is also in the overlay zone, and these are the same building, just again, from different angles, but in the R2 with the historic overlay zone. So, yeah, there have been a few, but not that many. The third map, it says accessory dwelling units, 2010 DADU areas. So these are the regulations that were proposed in 2010, but were not approved or acted upon by the City Council. And again, this is, under that proposal, DADUs would have been allowed only on lots with alley access. And so the, and then on lots with more, at least 1,000 square feet more than the minimum required in that zone. So what you see here are those lots that have alley access and have at least 1,000 square feet more than the minimum in that zone. And so that is, the first map is the area north of downtown. And the second map, which is, covers a much larger geographic area, are all of the areas with alleys south of the downtown in the single-family zones where there would have been the possibility under the 2010 draft regulations to have an accessory dwelling unit. Does that answer your questions, Commissioner Sand?
Yeah, thank you very much, those are great maps. Do you happen to have one that has the same as the last two, but without, well, I guess if you just took the red lines out to show alleyways, you'd be left with the lots that just have a white box that would be an eligible parcel because of their size.
Yes, those are.
I guess I'm surprised there's not more lots that would be eligible just because of size in what I'll call South Everett, or south of 41st.
It has to do with the alley requirement. That's really restrictive.
If you took out the alley requirement.
If you took out the alley requirement, and again, this is based upon both having a big enough lot and being accessible, having the alley access.
Yeah.
So if you, if the code were to deal with any lot, alley access or no alley access, you would have a much, much greater inventory of available lots. But again, this is, the regulations were, that were recommended back then.
The map shows also that when we did this, there's actually no lots that qualify in the RS zone whatsoever, even though the code was written there. But there's no alleys in the RS with those larger lot sizes either. So it's only R1, R2 that had any qualifying parcels.
Again, that was a little bit over, over 2,000 lots that would have been eligible under the 2010 draft code.
Thank you.
Any discussion, thoughts by the commission members?
Yeah. I think this is an old practice whose time has come again. I don't think you can talk about affordable housing without having this type of policy on the books. So I actually, I did a lot of research on this one because I think it's very, very important. In, I think it's 2009, HUD actually did a case study on DADUs. And so, and I'm actually going to give this to Alan. But one of the things that they mentioned, I really appreciate your earlier comments about how restrictive Everett's, the proposed legislation was, because it's very restrictive. And one of the things that they brought up in this case study, and of course HUD is for this as a solution to affordable housing, and given the population dynamics and the demographic changes and multi-generational housing, things like that, they said that the biggest was, many of these programs were not very successful as they lacked flexibility and scope. And if we do proceed forward, I think that we really need to consider that. So I actually went through what was proposed in the chart for the city of Everett, and I found it really restrictive. And of course, I have lots of comments on that, but I don't think anybody wants to hear me line-eyed on each one of those, so I'm proposing that I send those emails to you. But I am very much in support of continuing this down the path and making a recommendation to City Council. I think it is absolutely necessary, given what's going on with families, the baby boomer generation retiring. I myself have a special needs nephew, that if anything were to happen to my sister, he would come to live with us. And he's going to be an adult one day. So I think that this is a big issue, and given the fact that we have limited space in this world, we're finding out just how small it is every day, we need to make the most of the spaces we have. And I think we need to further this and continue exploring it. And I, this, this document that HUD put out is very informative, and I'm happy to share it with anybody, so just let me know. I can send it to Alan, and it can be sent out to
Do that.
... commission members. It's got a lot of great suggestions in it.
Michael, and then Alex?
I just want to concur with these thoughts. I also support moving forward with this. My question for Alan is whether we have any insights into the council's inaction five years ago, when this was before then.
Oh, yeah, that was something that was mentioned in the staff report.
Yeah.
But I neglected to mention it in my comments earlier. The, and I went back and looked at the discussion on, in the archives from the council that time, and they had a few general concerns, and I'll try to point out where that is in your staff report here.
Oh, page two, bottom of page two, is that?
Yeah, that's it. Certainly, there were concerns about compatibility with neighboring houses, what detached accessory dwelling units might look like, built in typically the rear yard of a home or behind an existing house, the bulk and scale, how they might appear to the person in the backyard of the neighboring house, for example. There were comments about that if they were only allowed on lots with alley access, there would be a disproportionate number or an impact on North Everett, because South Everett, for the most part, does not have alleys. At that time, they were questioning, one council member was questioning the need for additional population capacity under the 2025 growth targets that were in effect at that time, when we had a much, much lower 2035, excuse me, 2025 growth target than we have today under our recently updated comprehensive plan. And that allowing DADUs in residential neighborhoods would possibly reduce the market demand for housing in downtown, where we're trying to encourage a lot more housing development density. And so those were primary comments that were on the, on the record for the 2010 discussion in front of the City Council. And when this was first brought to our attention, and we discussed it with the mayor about not wanting to spend a lot of time on this, either for the commission, the public, or staff to bring something forward, if it was going to meet the same fate in the hands of the City Council, the mayor had a conversation with the council president, who I believe was on the Planning Commission at that time, council member Murphy, and he said to go ahead and proceed that he would at least make sure that it would, would have a hearing before the City Council, unless something changes between now and then. But that was the feedback that the mayor got from the council president. So with that, we've brought it forward for your consideration, and now I think it's just a matter of having a little bit more dialogue tonight, direction for staff, if there is any. Maybe it's still gathering more information, and if so, what information would you like to have that we can prepare for future discussions?
One thing I do want to mention, because it actually was quite interesting, the city of Santa Cruz in California had extreme problems with affordable housing. And so one of the things that they did by adopting this is they actually embraced the program and created guides and manuals and blueprints and things like that to help alleviate some of those concerns that people had in terms of compatibility and, and so, I'm a big believer, you can design just about anything to look good. You know, scale and size and bulk, and those are the key elements that you really need to be concerned with. But I think it's real important to note that they really embraced it, and it's been quite successful for them. So a lot of the concerns that people brought up in terms of, you know, in 2010, the reason why it kind of didn't pass, I think can be addressed by showing some case examples where instead of looking at it as being a detriment to the neighborhood, it's an enhancement.
Richard?
Yeah, speaking of design.
Sorry, you're next, Alex.
You took your cue.
Oh, I just wanted to echo what Commissioner Beck said earlier. I think this is a wonderful, this is a wonderful idea that we should definitely move forward with, and to kind of address some earlier concerns that were mentioned, you know, by the previous council, like it detracting from downtown development. I see this more as an enhancement. I mean, long, so many times I've heard Commissioner Sand mention that, you know, we need to really invest in a vibrant downtown. And one of the biggest challenges we have is bringing in businesses into that walkable space, big box stores that would really kind of invigorate that, and just simply because we don't have enough people around it. Density, easily created density in North Everett through this program, through code amendments like this would allow for that, and would only increase amenities in downtown, invigorate downtown development. It's, this is one important step, I think, to help grow the economic pie, the economic energy here in Everett. So I'm very excited about it.
Richard? Thank you, Alex.
Yeah, well, you know, in terms of design, you know, there's a little bit of, it's a little bit subjective, but, you know, in some of these neighborhoods where we have Victorian houses, and different folks might have different opinions about it, the people on the historic commission might not even agree on it, but putting a, trying to imitate, say, a Victorian or a craftsman-style architectural treatment doesn't necessarily benefit a Victorian neighborhood, because it's an attempt to sort of imitate, or sort of do a cheap knockoff, or just sort of ape the, the older, more historical construction, and sometimes a newer, more contemporary treatment can actually, in contrast, be sort of a benefit, beneficial type of aesthetic to a neighborhood. And, you know, this might be a little bit of a reach, but, you know, if you went down to someplace like Santa Monica or Manhattan Beach, and you saw, you know, brand new, you know, multimillion-dollar little beach houses next to, you know, an older one, you'd see that it, they don't necessarily conflict with each other. Sometimes they can sort of, sort of complement each other. So, you know, just from a, from a design standpoint, I'd like to see sort of a, when I start hearing things like, oh, the roofs should match, you know, the existing house, or, you know, they should be sort of using the same materials, well, maybe they could use the same materials, but be a sort of a contemporary version of the, of a similar type of, maybe, wood siding. So, you know, I guess I'm, you know, I'd like to see sort of a more creative sort of freedom, freedom to be allowed, so that, you know, sort of let those sort of creative juices flow, as it were, and allow architects to, you know, sort of express themselves a little bit. And I think it can be done in a very, you know, what might, you know, some folks might say, well, this is just, that doesn't fit in here, but others might say, well, that's really a nice little gem, you know, that somebody's created there. So, and as far as the alley thing, I don't know, I'm kind of trying to understand why having an alley would really make that much of a difference, other than, you know, you could drive up to it from the alley, you know, but really, I'm kind of trying to understand what, what is the thinking in terms of why, why there should be an alley there, you know? What is the, sort of the thought process behind that?
Thought at that time was that it would have less of an impact on the neighborhood if the detached accessory dwelling unit were located off of the alley, and primarily because of the parking. If you had a lot without an alley, and the only access to, to that lot was from the street in the front of the house, and you need an additional parking space for your detached accessory dwelling unit, that it would require putting another place to park, usually out in front of the house, if the lot wasn't big enough to fit something around the side or the backside of the house, which was also one of the reasons for the extra 1,000 square feet of lot area, so that you wouldn't have the visual impact of parking that if it's located in the back off of the alley, as opposed to adding a extra parking space in the front yard, widening the drive. in the front yard, widening the driveway, more impact on the streetscape.
But would that necessitate them parking in the alley, or, or entering some kind of a parking lot off the alley?
And our code, yes, does require that on, on, and it's a different part, it's not the land use code, it's a street code, that if you have an alley, a developed alley, that you're supposed to take your parking access off of that alley, not off of the street.
Thank you.
Megan?
Okay. So I remember, I remember being present in 2010 when they had this discussion at the city council, and there was, it seemed like there wasn't a sense of urgency at the time, and that was one of the council members' questions, was kind of like, why are we doing this now? But we haven't really had that recovery from the economic downturn. There's an increase in population, obviously, in getting more. And then because this also has the potential to increase housing prices, I think that it would be unfair to have the alley access as a requirement because it's disproportionately impacting places south of, in South Everett. So I think we should move forward, looking at this, but I think we should strike the language on the alley access requirement. And then also have a plan for how you're going to contact any amnesty-eligible units, or if that would just be, anyway, yeah, how you'll be able to, how you'll be contacting those properties, and also if that two-years is timeline is going to be able for staff, if there's something like 5,000 potential. I'm not sure how many
Well, first of all.
... units would be there, but if that's possible to do that in two years.
First of all, we're not proposing just taking a look at the 2010 regulations and make that what we're moving forward into the public process. We're asking you for some feedback on that. So, for example, if you talk about the Design Standards Commissioner, Jordison was suggesting that we maybe don't want to have the same design style or roof pitch and things of that nature. I think what we would like to do, if, if this is going to move forward, is just get your thoughts about what, what things we ought to consider, and that's what the list of questions was for, was to help us develop some draft standards. They may not be identical to the 2010 draft, Mike, it could be, you know, completely different if, if you wanted to. Or maybe we develop some options for you to consider, so that after you see what the pros and cons of those alternatives are, that we can firm up a code that you'd feel comfortable recommending to the council.
Lauren?
I think I was here in 2010, so I'm probably a little biased, and because I'm vested in what we proposed in 2010. I, I think that 20, the 2010 proposal is kind of the point to start at. And to answer the question about the alleyway, it seems to me the overriding concern at that time was if you're going to allow for this additional flexibility to essentially establish a two-family lot in a single-family zone, I mean, it's kind of like a de facto duplex situation, that from the street frontage, from the face of the properties, from the face of the neighborhood, it appears that it's the same. And if there's an impact at all, it would be towards the back. And the thought was that it would be less of an impact on existing neighborhoods than doing it that fashion. So I, I think leaving the alleyway requirement in there works. I think it's a key component to make it more compatible with existing neighborhoods. And I think the 2010 proposal is the place to start from.
Alex?
If I can just chime in on the alley, I mean, I have to really kind of applaud Commissioner Dunn for bringing up the disparity of the impact of having the alley requirement would have on North, South, North Everett versus South Everett. And something that somebody brought up to me when I was discussing this, the citizen, they really drilled in on the point that, you know, by and large, you know, the plots or lots that would be eligible for this are in North Everett, which is more affluent. So we're really just more creating another revenue source for people who already are doing well off, and instead of, and more or less blocking a revenue source for people who are living in South Everett, who, you know, primarily aren't as higher on the SES scale as North Everett. So creating opportunities for income for families to invest in Everett is an important thing. I think that's an option that we should consider. Additionally, I think one thing that we should, one thing we should look at is removing the parking requirements altogether. I mean, we had the energy, we had the discussion about what our energy future is going to look like, and it needs to be transit. And you can't have a market for transit if you don't take steps to make sure that there's space that needs transit. If we, if we ask for a parking stall for every one of these detached accessory dwelling units, we're going to have a car, we're going to have a polluter, we're going to have something that detracts from our capacity to meet our clean energy goals. And with, with these detached accessory dwelling units, we could achieve the density, we can achieve the walkability to really enhance our transit and make it viable. So I think there's a couple of things to consider. And again, I'm, also, one note, I've been reading through all these, all the requirements, and I would be very interested to get kind of some feedback, I mean, not right now, it's kind of a, it's a more in-depth question, but, you know, I'm looking at the requirements, you know, there has to be, you know, it can only be this large, it has to be at least 300 square feet of available space, that's not either driveway, that's not driveway or walkway, there has to be at least 15 feet between each buildings, if, you know, we can't exceed this floor area ratio, it can only be this tall. I feel as if, like, the requirements and all the, in the 2010 recommendations, you know, if they meet, like, if you have a lot you want to develop, you won't meet all of them. It, it seems like you'll be kind of, you know, you'll get nine out of 10, but that's not good enough because you, you can't do that, you won't be able to do the 15 feet from the other building and the five feet from the back of the lot. So I'd be interested to see, like, what the staff's take is on that, you know? Are these numerous requirements, do they overlap and more or less preclude this from actually happening, or are these units being built? Again, it's an in-depth question, so if it's more than you, more than you can answer right now, I completely understand, but it's a concern I wanted to raise.
Staff response, yeah, that's more than I can answer tonight. But we can do a little bit more research on, on some of those standards and how they impact the ability of, perhaps, if there is a typical lot in North Everett to meet that standard, but again, not sure that we can say that we've got a typical lot because there's so many different types of development patterns in, on these small R2 lots in particular. But did want to, I guess, one of the, respond to one of the generalizations that you'd made about affluence within the community, north versus south. David has done some really good maps that I think we would like to share with the commission that really kind of break that misconception.
Yes.
I think that there's a whole lot of good data that we can share that is kind of eye-opening from the American Community Survey. Yeah, it's from the U.S. Census Department that would, I think, be useful for a lot of different planning contexts, not just this one. But I think that's something we'd like to bring forward at some point in the near future.
So just along those lines, if you actually walk the neighborhoods up in the North Everett, I walk a lot, so you can tell there is a lot of economic diversity up there, a lot of economic diversity. But the other reason I don't think, I mean, just something to think about as we move forward in terms of the alley requirement is we are topographically interesting. And if you walk most of the neighborhoods in the city of Everett, there's coves, there's elevation, there's lots of things that are unique to various houses, depending on where they are. And they might not have an alley, but they might have another way of, you know, creating a space for something that is completely compatible with, with the main unit. So I think that the alley requirement is overly restrictive because it does eliminate a lot of opportunities in terms of other housing stock in other areas of the city, that it would be compatible, and it's, you know, the concerns in terms of, you know, the aesthetic quality and disruption to the neighborhood and things like that, they can be addressed. So I, I just, I think the alley requirement, because there's not that many alleys, except for in one portion of the city, because it's what they used to do, is restrictive for that reason.
Walk around Hiders to see alleys all over the place, walk around Old Heights to see alleys all over the place, walk, walk around the area around the old B&amp;M or Claremont area to see alleys all over the place. So there's a lot of alleys out there. But when you get into the areas probably south of Cascade High School, and you get into the new subdivisions, that's where you lose the alleys. But it's not just North Everett that has alleys, there's a lot of what I'll call south of 41st up to Cascade High School, there's alleys all over the place.
But why have it? I mean, really, why have it? Because there's other houses that it would make sense for. It's just that they don't have an alley.
I think the, the concern that back in 2010, or that I have, has to do with, it's all about design and how you fit into the neighborhood.
Right.
And how do you do that? And if you don't have some way of controlling that, then the other way is to say, okay, if you're going to have a bad actor someplace, let the bad actor be off the alleyway and not the front street, the front face of the neighborhood.
And, and I completely, we love this argument, I have to be the other side of it, which is change is constant, and to regulate for a bad actor and eliminate so many other possibilities is cutting your nose off.
That's why you have codes. If you trusted that everybody would do the right thing, you wouldn't need code. The reason you have code is because not everybody does the right thing.
But there's so few. I'm just saying, you're eliminating so many good possibilities by saying the alley.
Alex?
I just, I just think the, I mean, in the hierarchy of values we have for this conversation, I think, and a quick aside, I would love to see that, and, you know, I apologize in advance for making any generalizations, but the main driver of my concern was making sure all people could have access to this tool for, you know, for property improvement. That aside, though, I think the hierarchy of values, like, we need to take this argument, is making sure people have a home. That is a challenge, that is a crisis in this region, and that is, that is the principal, the principal concern I think we should be focusing on addressing. Then we should walk down our, our sets of, you know, the challenges we have, but I think looking through that lens is how can we make sure that a mother who is working two jobs, who has two kids, can afford to have, put a roof over her head? How can we make sure that this family who is just starting out can put enough money away to have, to, to buy a home, to have the bedrock of the, to have the, you know, the financial bedrock here in America? That is the, that is the primary thing. So when I think when we look at that, the, whether or not we have alley access, you know, whether or not alley access is needed, whether or not, you know, the lot size, those, those things kind of fall more to the wayside. But I think, again, that's our goal, at least, that's what I think going forward in this argu, with this debate, that's what my goal is going to be, and I invite you all to join.
Okay. Michael?
Alan, I think you're going to find a variety of opinions on this commission about some of the standards, and you'd probably be, better be prepared to manage the discussion when we get, when it comes time to actually come to a vote on this. But on the issues of what was, what the concerns were of council five or six years ago, to the extent that the fourth point in your memo is, was in fact a real concern about the market for housing in downtown versus this will dilute that market. Personally, I think they're totally different markets, but you might get some input from Realtors on that question, if in fact that is a real concern. Just get some opinions from Realtors about whether or not an accessory dwelling unit in a single-family zone is actually a competing market for housing in downtown. I personally don't think it is, but it'd be interesting to hear from Realtors on that.
Chris?
Real quick question. I, I think as part of the comprehensive plan, we did some questioning around infill in the neighborhoods. Do you recall what the outcome of the, that data was?
Yeah, we did actually, in estimating capacity under our land use plan, we did make some assumptions that, at least in those neighborhoods with alleys, where it was a little more conducive to the infill dwelling unit or the detached accessory dwelling unit, that we could see as many as, in an aggregate divided by the number of blocks, on average of two per block. And that was built into our, some of our capacity assumptions, but it was only on the lots with alleys where we made that assumption. We also have some policy language, and I didn't put it in this staff memo, I put it in the memo from the July 19 meeting, where it does talk about that as one tool for increasing housing capacity and affordability.
We also got public comment, though, I think, from some of the, the surveys, though, right? And I can't remember if it was overwhelmingly neutral, or there was no comment or against it, but I
And I'd have to go back and, and look at the information from the surveys that we did.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. The only thing I would add is we spoke about affordability, and I think that's been hit from many angles. The, the one that I would come from, as Alex was speaking about that young mother or father with a couple of kids, I got an 88-year-old dad, and I frequent him a few times a day, and that population, we, we have to make sure we're taking care of that population as well. And the other day at lunch where he lives, I had a conversation, and it was interesting how many, you talk about the demographics changing. So I build this single-family something behind for my dad, and I move in his house, or my, one of my kids or his grandkids. So it can really, you know, I, I think everybody's gotten the, the startup of housing, but there's the other end of that housing that, that we need to make sure that, that we're looking at as well. So if, if you could bring that information forward, it would be good as well. Great discussion. Thanks for all the input, and this will be a interesting process. And I, as well as, I'm glad the mayor and the council chair, I've had a couple of conversations with a couple of other council folks, and there's interest with them as well, so it's not just a, a one-way street. So at this time, I would open it to public comment, and I would start with Kent Peverly.
Kent Peverly, 312 Pex Drive. As I looked at this document that was online, I found that the 2010 proposal was fairly decent. I would have been in favor of most everything in there. But there are a couple of things that, that I wanted to bring forth. One was the concern about the, on the part of the council, about the, the difference between North Everett and South Everett and the availability. And I was wondering if that had anything to do with lot sizes in South Everett versus North Everett, in addition to the, to the alley access thing. As far as the alley access, I'm thinking, what's wrong with requiring alley access if you have an alley and open it up if you don't have an alley? Now, as Councilman Beck, or Commissioner Beck pointed out, there's a diversity through all our neighborhoods of conditions on lots, and I think it'd be quite hard to legislate standards that would apply for every situation. I mean, that's, how do you do that, you know? I don't think I'd put a detached accessory on my lot. But that leads to another question, and that is the definition of accessory dwelling unit. When does a, an accessory dwelling unit, when it does diverge from being just an additional bedroom to being a duplex? It may be spelled out on the IRC, I didn't take time to look that up yet, but I think that kind of plays into the issue here of, of how we're addressing additional affordable housing. And then in addition to that, on, on the 2012, or 2010 proposal here, it talked about the people that could occupy the accessory units, and it played into the definition of family. Now, I understand we're going to be addressing that issue here before the council, or before the commission, and I know that it will be addressed by the council because they had a pretty raucous meeting about that recently. So who is the people that would be occupying this? Are they, you know, how do you, well, it's part of the discussion, I guess, about how you define family, and who is it we're trying to address here? That also then leads into the discussion of affordability. That also then leads into the discussion of affordability. If it's a family member, a young teenager, or I mean, a, not, a college student, for example, who just needs to get out of the house but still needs a place to live because he has no income, that's not the same market or the, not the same person that's seeking a place in downtown metro Everett area because he probably has a job, or she. So anyway, those are just some issues that, that kind of came to my mind. I think that some of the other things I can address by email to the staff, and I'll let it go at that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy, one point of clarification, this letter, how do we get that into the record? Or is it in the record? It is. Okay.
That'll be the Thea Miller.
Yes.
Letter.
I need to go pick up my dad from the babysitter at 8:30, and I've asked Chris to finish off with the last two. Thank you for allowing.
Eric Alder.
Just in case.
Eric, if you give us your name and address for the record and try to keep your comments to about three minutes.
Okay. My name's Eric Alder, address 2024 and 1/2 Rucker Avenue. I'm, first of all, let me, I'd like to introduce myself and say that I'm excited to be living in Everett and to be a part of this community. I'm going to be studying, actually, geology starting this month at Everett Community, and it's kind of in that vein, I think that the idea for these detached units, that it is a good idea in keeping with the spirit of using, getting the most out of the space that we have. My concern, and being new to this area, it might even be a non-issue at this point, would be the beefing up the structures if you're going to, say, have a structure that was at one point a garage, so no people living in it, and all of a sudden you're just going to, you put an addition on that structure or building a whole new structure. We all know the unique challenges from a geological standpoint and seismic standpoint that we have in this region. So if this is going to be something that the city moves forward with, I would just like to see that included in the, the regulation and the ordinance, saying if you do want to use an existing structure for this purpose, that while you're doing the renovation, since it'd be the perfect time to do it anyway, that you do include some seismic improvements to the structure to make, make it more seismically resilient, because the last thing we want to do is increase population density while putting that increased population at risk by moving into these structures. So that's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Hey, Eric. John Dimas. John, if you give us your name and address for the record and keep your comments to about three minutes. Thank you.
So John Dimas, 2126 Wetmore. And before I start, I want to thank Commissioner Beck for bringing up about Santa Cruz, California. I ran across that website this weekend, and it was very expansive. If the city of Everett could have something close to that, that would be awesome, because it was very, very, very informative. So my presentation really won't take that long. So I'm hoping to build a, is that not showing? Oh, there we go. Okay.
Alan, it's on. Go ahead, John.
So I'm hoping to build a DADU unit at 2126 Wetmore at my family's home. Real quick, that's some of the points I'm going to cover, but I'll just skip over the slide. Oh, that's the front of the home from the county website. It's the winter time, so there's no leaves on that tree, so it was the best shot from, of the front of the house. Home was built in 1901. We purchased it in 2011, roughly about a little over 6,000 square feet, 6,098. The house is about 1,700 square feet, and I've got a detached garage in the back that is about 600 square feet. So why are we asking for, for this change? And that's a picture of him right there. That's my twin brother, Joe. I've been his guardian since 2012. He is special needs and since January of this year has been living with us. When we bought the house, one thing that was very important, being that it was built in 1901, was having the character of the house remain as true as possible to the time period. So the reason I picked this picture, not only because it had Joe in it, but also if you look at the furniture and the flooring, we've been very particular in what we put in the house, trying to match to, to what is with the style. My wife has been very particular on colors, and it, it looks, it looks great. I mean, it really does, it's modern, yet very close with the characteristics of, of the house itself. We are also a multi-generational household. Currently, we have three generations in the house. Coming in February, we will have a fourth. My daughter's expecting, so I will be a grandfather at the end of February. So we'll have four generations under one roof. And the options, so I've got ad space. The options that I see is adding a second-story addition, adding a first-story addition, and those really bother me because it's just going to change the, the look and the feel of, of the house. And so that leaves me with wanting to put a DADU unit on top of the existing garage. Hopefully, you know, we'd be adding the extra space while maintaining the character of, of our home. So over the weekend, I downloaded a program from the internet called SketchUp, and these are the options laid out. In dark green is our lot, the one on the bottom that says today, that is our house in the front with the garage in the back. And then each of the units, or each of the ideas are there. So now I've got a slight 15-second video for each one, so it's going to kind of fly through and do, kind of do a 360. So here's how we're at today. There is, you can see the garage coming around the house, and you can see the back of the house kind of has a, a flat roof on it. So that's a view of the house today. And on the next slide is the second-story addition. This would be building onto that flat roof. One of the concerns I have about this is there's a lot of electrical that goes, that passes through that, and not only would it affect during construction on the first floor of the house, but also on the second floor of the house. And to me, it would really, really disrupt a, a lot of the household, but also the, the construction of the house itself. So next is the first-floor addition, and as you can see, that would be adding on to the, that lower portion of the home. Unfortunately, that would also take away yard space, and, you know, we would like to keep as much, we don't want to get rid of any of our, our yard, it's pretty precious what, what we have, so we really want to maintain it. So for me, that leaves the DAD unit being built on top of the garage. And honestly, this is just my favorite option because it maintains the yard, maintains my garage, and we get the extra space up on top. So before I finish, I did have a couple other slides I wanted to mention. These are kind of what was the initial inspiration for what I had in mind. This is a gentleman who sells plans on the internet for about $200 to $300. A person can go and buy a full set of plans and, you know, submit them to their planning departments. And these are just overviews of heights. I believe it's 20, under 23 feet with a roof pitch of 12'4". And as you can see, two-car garage on the bottom, and I think the way he's got it configured, it is two bedrooms, a bathroom, a kitchen, and a living area space. And the next slide is just another example. But anyways, I, in thinking what I wanted to speak tonight, you know, seeing that I'm in favor of this, I kind of wanted to give you guys a visual of kind of what I had in mind and to see, you know, some of the other designs that are out there. So, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Alan, it seems like the, this, the presentation we just had looks very similar, similar to one of your photographs of an example of an existing accessory dwelling unit in Everett already. So what is it about this particular proposal that doesn't meet code? That he couldn't replicate what's already been done in Everett already?
Well, the one that I think you're referring to is in the historic overlay zone, and it's only available in the historic overlay zone under the current code, and his property is not within that overlay.
And would the, would this be permitted in the 2010 version of the proposal?
Without doing a, you know, detailed review, the concept, yes, would, it would have been allowed, alley, extra 1,000 square feet above the minimum, and probably enough separation between the front and the back unit.
Those are all the speakers that I have. Is anyone else that'd like to speak as part of our public comment in the workshop? Okay, hearing none, I'll turn it back to the Planning Commission. Questions for Alan, other discussion on the issue? I appreciate all the, the comments everyone just made. I, I feel like I struggle with this issue a little bit because my version of, in my mind, I think, like a lot of people, goes to kind of the worst-case scenarios and probably the abuses and, that exists out there, and I think some of the pictures and certainly the, the photos that you brought, John, are helpful in that regard, so thank you.
One comment, because the city of Seattle really struggled with this when they tried to adopt a DADU, and they have a track history now. And so as we move forward, I would suggest that maybe we contact the city of Seattle or maybe get some information from those folks, because they're now actually expanding the program because it's worked so well. So it might, you know, we have some empirical information out there that we should take advantage of.
Other questions, discussion? All right. That'll wrap up item number three for us. Alan, any other housekeeping, other items?
Nothing else for housekeeping, I think, as far as it pertains to the discussion that we just had. We'll do a little bit more research and bring something back to you in the near future. Hope, hope to keep this moving and, and without too much delay, but it will not be the next meeting, maybe in, in October, but David and I will have to look at the Planning Commission's schedule for the next couple of months here.
Yeah, I'm not sure that, we've raised a lot of discussion points, I'm not sure we've clarified the focus for you in terms of your workload, so, so good luck, and I look forward to seeing what you have at the next meeting, so.
Thank you.
Well.
Hopefully you have more clarity than us.
I mean, it, it isn't difficult to count to four, so I think that staff can figure out kind of where the, the ball's rolling towards. But it seems to me that there's an option of, of no change, the 2010 proposal, something that's much, much more flexible than 2010. And then the other would be to just allow whatever regulations we have for the historic zone to, to be opened up to all zones. If we're looking to achieve what John's looking for in his particular case, for the type of use, type of facility, the intention of it, it seems like those are the options we've got. And how difficult would it be to just open up the provisions that are now for the historic zone and just to citywide?
Yeah, with some modifications, because right now, that's only allowed on lots, for example, in the R2 zone where you have at least 7,500 square feet.
Right.
And so that's quite a bit larger than the minimum in that zone or even the minimum that was recommended in the 2010 example. But we can kind of start there, I think, with, as far as options, and then you can have a discussion about things that the commission thinks are either necessary or not necessary or can be improved upon. We'll do a little bit of research with some of the other communities that were mentioned tonight.
You know, one thought I had on the whole design compatibility question is, one option might be to list out a menu of several different parameters like roof line, siding material, window treatment, different design, and say, choose two or three of them, any two or three, and, you know, work with that as a way to ensure that the new unit doesn't look like it was just plopped there from nowhere, you know, it had some relationship. It is supposed to be accessory after all, so some relationship to the main building doesn't hurt, in my opinion, but still preserve flexibility so that you're not dictating design.
Well, on the design note, I mean, if you want to take a hint from pocket squares versus ties, I mean, the pocket square is supposed to complement the tie, so, I mean, not match.
All right. I appreciate the discussion, everybody. I believe our bylaws only leave us four minutes here until we're required to close the meeting, so anything else, Alan?
Nothing else from staff tonight.
Okay, great. Thank you, everybody. We'll adjourn.